We are back in regular session. I just want to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. So they're aware that our owls are working. And we already did call the meetings in order. So at this point in time, we're getting ready to open up the meeting to public comment period. And as we have said in the past, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will however respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff members get back to you at an appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy law, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about specific school personnel. Please know however that we do take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. If you're unsure of who to contact, you can find the communication flow chart under the Board of Education tab on the school website. We want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that the speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Our policy on public expression provides for a period of 30 minutes to be set aside at the beginning and end of each board meeting. Time limits may also be set. Tonight, each individual speaker will be allotted between three and four minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. Also, in accordance with our policy, anyone making a presentation to the board will stand at the podium, state their name and where they're from before addressing remarks to the board president. Any group or organization wishing to address the board may come up to the podium but must identify a single spokesperson for their comments. So at this point, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to share concerns with the board?
So I just have a couple. Cole, if you could come to the podium.
Oh, you don't remember. You were the heart of the board.
I bet.
Yes, we are.
Okay. So just about the...
Say your name.
My name's Cole Loughlin. And I have questions about the staff and teachers being let go. Just to recap kind of what's going on. So we're letting seven teachers go? That's correct?
Well, we're still working on... We're addressing positions right now, not staff people.
Okay. But is this going to be addressed at tonight's meeting? Like the decisions of the board about who's being let go?
What we're doing is we adopted a budget, the bottom line of the budget, the dollar amount that we are going to loosen the budget. We did that last time we met. This meeting, we will be addressing the positions that we know we can support within that budget. So it's not people, it's positions that we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
But we will, we have a board, a public budget hearing coming up, May 9. And that will be, all component parts of the budget will be presented. And hopefully people will get explanations if they have questions.
Okay, so that meeting will essentially explain what we're going to be doing with the money at that point that we are getting from cutting out these positions?
Yes, the budget will be presented in three different component parts. And all of those parts combined should give that picture.
Okay, okay. So are we going to talk at all about, you know, like, what exactly, so you're not talking tonight about like what we're going to be doing with the money then, is my understanding?
Correct.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
An additional comment? We do have an additional comment period at the end of the meeting. At this point, close the public comment session and move on to the remainder of our meeting. Does this mean we have any amendments to that? We do have an agenda with four action items on it that we will be writing on the end of our actions. Yeah. It's a very large actions. Yeah. All right, so do you want to do our report and presentation?
So this evening, I am giving a fair share of our, my report time to a presentation for high school for the internship presentation from Mrs. Maxwell's work-based learning student. So welcome, everybody. And they're set up over here on a premium. So anyone who needs a better view can certainly rearrange yourselves. Welcome, everybody.
I think I can go first. My name's Eli Thetford. I intern down at San Onofre, or intern rather. My basic jobs are helping assemble new equipment, mainly Kubota's because that's what, that's the main dealer. I also help put new blades on choppers, change and service equipment, doing various other jobs in that field. This will help me in the future for several reasons. I plan on going into mechanical engineering and using, you know, my experience here. I can get an insight on how things are built, put together, and how they operate. Now I'm actually employed there. I finished up my internship about a month back. I work part-time there now and been really enjoying it. It's pretty simple work, but I do enjoy it a lot. Thank you.
So hi, I'm Lisa Harrington. My internship is at Sunset View Farm, which is in Easton. So in this picture, in the picture where I'm holding like the tool with like the medicine, I am administering health monitoring bolus. It is comparable to an adult taking a pill. But only this bolus has technology that constantly monitors the calf's body temperature and movement, and movement when eating drinks. The bolus sends health information to a computer program that allows us to see how the calves are doing. And this bolus will detect a sick calf before it even shows signs of illness, allowing us to correctly diagnose and treat the calf if needed. In most cases, the calf would only need electrolytes, which is like Gatorade for us, to make her feel better. In my other picture in the corner, it's a wagyu heifer, which is a type of beef cattle. And this calf has elite genetics. It has potential to be the largest wagyu to exist. And she is valued at well over 150,000.
Charles Stater sounds present.
Reason being, she can produce offspring into the wagyu population that will be larger than the average wagyu, also making them more valuable. So during my internship, I have, I am watching all of these aspects of the business. Record-keeping, transportation of cattle, maintaining the health of animals, feeding them, vaccinating them, and preparing them to get their hooves trimmed. Giving them bedding, bedding along with many other roles. Like I got to dehorn some calves. I got to do vaccinations all by myself. And I got to feed cat, mix milk and feed calves all by myself with Elizabeth Quinn like near me, but I got to do most of the same by myself. My internship will help me in the future because I'm going to SUNY Morrisville for dairy production and management. And I want to work and have my own cows at a farmer at my own. So, thank you.
I'm Alexis Marquis. And so my internship is I work upstairs with the elementary art class when Mrs. Slavin. I chose this internship because I want to be an art therapist when I'm older and I want to work with kids from ages four to 18. So I thought this would be a really good experience for me to like see all the different age groups and just how they react to things. And it also kind of showed me that kindergartners are more mature than fourth graders. So that was surprising for me. I also have like drawings and stuff that the little kids did. These were some of the art projects that they did when I was there. And then they did little eggs too, because it'd be stir. So, yeah, it's been going really good so far. I mainly work with the kindergartners. And they, the reason why I like working with the kindergartners more is because that's the group that I want to focus on the most. Because I'm kind of going in between being an art teacher myself or a therapist. But why not do both? So, yeah.
Hi, my name is Lexi Carey. And I internship at Irish Hill Century Farm. It's over in Stillwater. It's a thoroughbred breeding facility. So I chose this internship because I want to go to SUNY Morrisville for a four-year degree. And after two years, you can go into rehabilitation or reproduction. So I took the internship to decide whether I wanted to go the repro route or the rehab route. So we have about six stallions at the barn. They're New York Sires, so people bring their saddlebreds or their thoroughbreds to come over and get bred because thoroughbreds have to be live cover. They can't use AI for thoroughbreds. So the horses have to come to us. And then we also get brood mares from all over, especially down from Kentucky, to be bred, have their mares here. We keep them here. We have their foals. And then sometimes the foals get shipped back and sometimes they stay with us. And usually like the same horses come and we get new ones. But there's about 200 horses on the farm right now with probably 100 more babies coming. We've had like 50 already. So I, there's Emily on the bottom left. She's one of the hat. So I kind of shadow her a lot. She's the brood mare manager and foal manager. So we go around and we do bowling shots, oral medicine, IM shots. We check the mare's bags, see how they're doing, if they have wax or if they're dripping milk. We make sure that the herd is, you know, safe. They don't have any injuries. And then we also move horses around quite a bit. We hold them for the barrier and to get their dentals done. Morgan, who is Rick on the bottom right, he's the owner. He's the stallion manager. His wife is a vet. And we, like I shadow her quite a bit too, to see like dental work. And I've seen culture swabs and a whole bunch of other things. Bill, I work with him sometimes. He's in the top middle. He is, he works with the stallions. He's the one that usually holds them during the breeding process and makes sure that everything is safe. I give intramuscular shots a lot, like around in the pastures because all the brood mares have to have monthly vaccinations for rotavirus, rotavirus flu, all that sort of stuff. I deal with foals. I see them a lot. I've seen live birth, which was pretty cool. I've seen, on the bottom left is a what we call a dummy foal. So when it was born, it still thought that it was inside the womb. So it didn't function properly. So we had to milk the mare, which I'm doing in the top right every two hours and feed the foal with a feeding tube. But basically, I get to see a lot of really cool things. It'll help me in the future because with all the networking that I've done and I've gone to like the New York State Horse Racing Rally because of Rick, I've been able to network and hopefully this will help me get a job after college if I decide to go the repro route.
Hi, I'm Kylie Austin. I'm currently interning at North Country House for obedience. So since pause has a big range, a variety of different classes and programs, I just chose a couple of pictures I've taken that I would just discuss. So in the top left, I am at the puppy preschool program. So we were, in this picture, we are taking pictures for the little graduation. And the fun part about that was actually getting them to stand on the platform and staying there and staying there and looking at the camera without them jumping off and moving. So it takes a lot of patience. That particular dog jumped off a couple of times and ran around the room and I had to put him back on. So, and then next to that one on the top with the Black German Shepherd is the confident puppy program. So that program basically is teaching you how to form a connection with your puppy along with teaching them marker words like yes, like you're doing a good job, like some positive reinforcement. And then like, okay, oopsies, that's not what I was exactly looking for, but I'm not mad at you. And as puppies, for fun fact, they don't know where their hind end is. So they teach little exercises so that they get aware of their hind end. So like you turn them to their back. So if your puppy was facing this way, you take their head with like a tree and turn them to their back so they are aware that there is something behind them. So that will help a lot when you're trying to give them a proper sit. In the top left, I'm with a dog named Aggie on the slap mill. It is a self-powered treadmill. So it allows a dog who has way too much energy and will exert that energy in a simple game of fetch or a simple walk around the yard. You can just let them go. So they go as fast as they want and they can exert all their energy out and like that won't go. But they will have to learn like simple words like, are you ready? Which means, okay, you can go. Or when you're trying to get them to stop, you walk up to them with your hand facing them and then they will slow down. You give them a couple of breaks, give them a couple of seconds for a break. Can you go a couple more times? Down in the bottom right, I am at a wellness, body, and nutrition workshop. So a lot of people don't like to admit that their dog is fat. So they have a scale from one to nine telling you how fat or how thin your dog is. A one to three is too thin, which means their ribs are severely shown. A four to five is their ideal. They are very healthy. Their ribs aren't as exposed, but they're not too surrounded with their extra skin. And then a six to nine is they're a little too heavy. And then the nutrition part comes in to how to get your dog to lose weight and not giving them the wrong stuff, like what you should be doing with them depending on their breed and how much they weigh. The bottom two pictures are a reality program. So it's an off-site program that they go to a variety of parks. Basically, it's just going to show the dogs the reality of the world and just expose them to the outside world. It's basically just a fun program for you to do with your dog while doing little games that they provide for you, like leapfrog. You're not actually jumping over the other dogs. You do five paces in front. You have to sit your dog and make them stay and so on until you get to the finish line. But if one dog breaks that thin stay, you have to start all over. And then Simon Says, which is the dog commands. So if you're out because you sat your dog and they didn't say Simon Says, you'd be out. And then my soon-to-be boss took a picture of my dog. I was about to bring my dog there. So yeah, I hopefully will be getting a, they're putting together a job offer for me. So, and I will be accepting. So hopefully in mid-May, they will be hiring me. And I'm going to continue working there and learning new skills. So eventually I can become certified myself.
Hi, I'm Brady Mothet. I intern at Merck Forest and Farmland. Basically, what we've been doing for my whole internship, we've had a really good staff season this year, especially up there because it's so, it's higher up in elevation and stakeholder for longer. So two weeks ago, we stopped boiling, which is really good. So I've done stuff up there, line maintenance in the woods to the picture in the middle is we had a maple open house. And I was just kind of, that's just like a small pan so the kids can understand how syrup is made. And then I'm putting together a filter press, which just filters all the bark and gross stuff out of your syrup because who wants that? He's kind of just teaching me what to do because I'd never put one of them together before. That's Mike, the main guy I work with. We kind of do random stuff too every once in a while. While I'm up there, it'll be anything from working with animals to going out in the woods, to cabin checks, to I don't know, just random things. But you'd be surprised how many people just don't understand how syrup is made. Like I felt like it was a pretty simple concept, but you'd be surprised the questions that you get while you're working up there. Some of them are pretty interesting. Yeah, in the future, I might use this because I think they're going to offer me a job for the summer. And this experience helped me get a job recently.
Thank you so much for... So just, we've spent a lot of time together this past week. So just a few additional things to share, not too much additional information. We have in here a merger for Modified Soccer. This is not an existing merger because we weren't merged previously. So Section Two would like the board to approve the merger with Cambridge. We thought originally it could be combined because we were already merged with Junior varsity and varsity soccer. So this is just a formality. We are past the deadline, but Section Two, the league accepted our merger request. But Section Two just would like the board approval. And then Gina will send over the approval tomorrow. We should be all set, ready to go. But then since it's considered a new merger, the board should approve that. So you will see that in your packets. I believe there was a question about 6.8. So I'll talk about that in a few minutes when we get to 6.8. The service provider agreement, Dan, you had a question on that. I'm not sure if that was answered. But just a couple of other reminders. So we're updating our planning tool. I've been sharing with you that we're working, Karen McGregor and I are working on updating some of our software and systems so that our financial system can talk to a forecast system so that we can provide the board with multi-year plan, a financial plan. So we are just loaded all of our data, our history. So Karen and I will be working on that in the next few weeks. We have obviously some other, other things with the end of the year going on. But it's our hope that at some time, you know, near the beginning, the end of this year, the beginning of next school year, that we would be able to share with you a forecast based on what we know and what some of the intended increases may be in the future. Be able to share that with the board so we can, and then we'll update that. It'll be a living document. We'll update that each year as we approve a new budget. So that way we can, we can be forecasting out and have a clear picture, not only where we are currently each month, but then, you know, once a year at budget time, looking at our budget and then a forecast out. So we're continuing to update that. I have shared with you that we needed to find a new website provider because Blockboard will be changing ownership mid, next school year. And it's best that we could have work, start working on the transition now. So we'll be, we'll be switching over to the provider called Aptigie. And they have the three-in-one. I think I talked about that a little bit before that we were looking at a few providers. And so we will be seeing come around the beginning of the next school year, a update to our website. And it also will combine our school messenger system. So right now, we have a website. We have a school messenger system that's separate from that. That will be an all-in-one. It will also allow us to have a live feed and will also allow us to connect news out, not only that we put on the website, but we can immediately push that out to our social media pages as well. It allows, I think, for more central location for other social media needs. So for example, Mrs. Carey would like to be able to more easily put out, you know, what's for lunch every day, share cafeteria news. And so she can do that, update our live feed, but also push that out to Facebook and Twitter without everybody having different accounts. So any clubs, so that would be something that we would want to talk about and our policy committee is really looking at. There are some unofficial pages for clubs and/or other types of sports. So I think one or two of our athletics teams. So I think it'll just make it easier for our parents that everything's all-in-one. So you don't have to belong to three or four different pages. So we can coordinate with those club advisors and coaches and kind of have them all, give them all individual permissions to update. And we'll have a kind of a webmaster that will filter first. So it will be a nice all-in-one place for parents. And in addition, there's a component similar to what some competitors call Parent Square. And what that does is in the app, where you can get the live feed and our website information, also a parent. So if you have two children, for example, so Andrea, you could go in. And in that app, you, you can bring up and it'll show your, each of your children. And you can access their grade information. Teachers can feed their Google Classroom, assignments, everything. So as a parent, it's just a one, you would just have to be in one place. You don't have to click and log into some Google Classroom or log into, you know, I can send out bulletin, school closing information. It'll all be one place. So I think it's going to be great. Very excited. And I think we'll get a little bit of just a modern feel to our website. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be great. So we're in the process of training and so a lot of the building gets done behind the scenes. And then we're going to roll out to the community. So this company also works with us on a plan to roll out and teach people how to use all these different pieces. And then at the beginning of the school year, we'll have training for faculty and staff.
So it's September, is that what you said? When it...
Yeah, maybe the initial website piece you may see in July, August, but...
But September would be the real rollout.
Right, where, yeah, we'll, we'll start, we'll start communicating out some of it. But it'll be a little bit of a phase in so that it's not overwhelming for people. You'll see probably the new eagle midsummer if everything runs on schedule.
Does the calendar have everything, like sporting events?
So that's what we're working on. It's, you can take all individual calendars and push them in to the web feed. So, so there's, I think, some, some confusion often is, so we have the school calendar. But I know even for myself, if I'm thinking, hey, I got to double-check something, I'm not necessarily going on the full calendar. I'm looking on that little news, that little feed of the upcoming events right there. They call that the news feed. So one, the calendar feeds, so we could take the athletics calendar, take the high school calendar, the elementary calendar, and set it up so that they all feed into there and sync up. And so today I was talking to Will Moore about how we're hoping that's, so Schedule Galaxy... so Schedule Galaxy, we can't abandon that because that is used by the league. And the assigners, when they assign and schedule all the games, everything is done through Schedule Galaxy. But we're hoping that that can feed in there. But what will be nice is Mr. Moore can have a very easy access if at, you know, at 2:00, we realize that we were supposed to go to an away game and their field is underwater and it's getting changed here. He can just easily go in and put that out, put a little note in, it goes up on the website site, it'll go on the live feed. He can click to send it out to Facebook and Twitter and whatever our social media pages are. He can send it out to text, he can send it out to emails. So, you know, I think we want to have a communications plan administratively with the A.D. and some of the people who will have permissions. I think we don't want to overwhelm people. One of the things is we want to use, save certain things for, you know, we don't want to overwhelm people with 17 texts a day because then people, so we'll want to work on a communications plan as well. But I think it's very exciting. The finished product is, you know, there's some other schools that do a really nice job and the team seems great to work with. Gina just kinda joined in from the Board side. So, again, then the Board's calendar, you know, can, can feed in and a lot of those updates in terms of meetings. So, yeah, I think it's gonna really do all the things that we've been dreaming about, but it will take a little time, I think, to, to transition over and get all of those up, up to speed. And that just really finally, just to, so next week, we have our strategic planning. The next step right now is our, so at our last workshop, as you know, we have the mission, vision, and core values that have been drafted that we're preparing to share with our group on May 2nd. Right now, we have 23 people, including our group, and then some community members. They plan on sending another note out probably in the next few days, just as a reminder for signup, probably today or, I mean, tomorrow or Thursday, just as a reminder. We'd like to really know by the end of the day, Friday, what our numbers are, just because we're going to be providing food and we want to have enough food for all of our participants. And our facilitator really believes that we really don't want to go over 50 people to really make any effective work group. So, we're about halfway there, so it's pretty exciting. And we have some teachers and staff, as well as some community members, parents. So, we've had a good, a good initial response. So, we'll send out a reminder for that. And then I'm happy that we have our, as the Board knows, our two principals to be here tonight, to be appointed. And just again, wanted to let the Board know, really, we had a great turnout for our committees. It was a very thoughtful process. And, you know, the, the committees not only gave some verbal feedback and group feedback, but they worked individually and, and they really were passionate about the process. And I believe that both committees support our candidates. So, happy to present them to you. That's, that's all I have. If you have any questions. Max, if you have anything you'd like to share.
So, our top 10 was announced, which was really cool. Proud of all the top 10 people. And Mr. Switzer brought up that, like, what are you gonna miss the most about Salem? And he, like, asked that to the top 10 and then he asked me that. And I was thinking about it and I was like, well, I would miss the community. Like, I would miss just everyone trying to work together. And I would miss just like how the school is close together too. So, yeah, basically, that's it.
It's winding down.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Yeah, two more months.
I would just add, surrounding the top 10 in this goal include this in our budget newsletter that will be going out sometime next week, that we will, we'd like to, I think it was very well received that we had a separate publication with our top 10, spotlight on our top 10, our valedictorian and assessorian, as well as really highlighted some of our end-of-the-year accomplishments and upcoming, you know, end-of-the-year activities. So, we are going to keep those separate. So, you'll see probably mid-May, early June, that come out as well. So, we did, we are reminding people so if they're missing that again and hopefully that will become kind of one of our new traditions, to send that out separately. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, as presented. So moved. And our committees, I don't know, we were busy together, it was the committees, the finance and personal, because we've been working the budget workshop.
Budget process, budget hearing on the ninth.
On the ninth, great. And the policy committee, we haven't met, but we will be meeting on May 8th and we will be considering some, any feedback on the non-resident tuition policy. And there's a couple of other ones that we need to just keep in the rotation for, for review. So, we'll be doing that. During the night, I hope the safety committee has planned a meeting.
So, we had some assessments done, some initial walkthroughs. We're just waiting for the feedback on those reports and then we'll start with our new, our new group, so.
And I did actually, he emailed that to me at the end of the day yesterday, so I have not had time to review that yet. But they did send out a summary of initial assessment and, and we'll work on planning the next steps of how we go about setting our priorities for that and bringing our, our safety committee up to speed, introducing them to need of the Needham Group and their representatives and how they'll, they'll establish how we'll work together. So, we're looking at some available dates and hope to have them at least one more meeting, if not two, before the end of the year. They also just need to just review, part of what their assessment is, is reviewing our, our plans and making some recommendations for updates. So, we do have to, you know, just kind of get those in order as well because, as you know, we need to have our, have a public hearing on those over the summer and some of those early in the year. So, we will be working on our safety plans as well and updating those. Moving on to action items. All right. Entertain a motion to accept the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of Salem Central School District hereby abolishes three positions within the elementary education tenure area effective August 31st, 2023. Superintendent is directed to notify the effective staff members of this action. Motion by Dan. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to accept the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of Salem Central School District hereby abolishes one position within the media reading tenure area effective August 31st, 2023. The superintendent is directed to notify the effective staff member of this action. Motion by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Salem Central School District hereby abolishes one position within the mathematics 7 through 12 tenure area effective August 31st, 2023. Superintendent is directed to notify the effective staff member of this action. Motion by Dan. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to accept the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Salem Central School District hereby abolishes one position within the E.L.A. 7 through 12 tenure area effective August 31st, 2023. The superintendent is directed to notify the effective staff members of this action. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Entertain a motion to accept the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Salem Central School District hereby abolishes one position within the business education tenure area effective August 31st, 2023. The superintendent is directed to notify the effective staff members of this action. Thank you. Motion by Peter. Second by Dan. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Then with a heavy bar. Entertain a motion to waive the six-month notification requirement for the purpose of retirement for Rebecca Baker Johnson. So moved. Entertain the motion to accept the following resignation for the purpose of retirement. Rebecca Baker Johnson, secondary math teacher effective July 1st, 2023. So moved. Motion by Andrea. Second. Second by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to accept the following resignation for the purpose of retirement. Drew Haskell in the position of custodian effective November 1st, 2023. So moved. Motion by Heidi. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Entertain a motion to approve the following substitute appointments. Drew Haskell, substitute custodian, cleric, and cafeteria.
Doesn't want to leave.
So moved. Second. Senator Andrew. And Heidi. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to amend the following appointments for the 22-23 school year. Katie Quack, a mentor appointment on July 13, 2022, from JV softball coach to modified softball coach effective for this school year. And Ashley Campbell, a mentor appointment made on March 13, 2023, from modified softball coach to softball volunteer coach. So moved. Motion by Heidi. Second. Second by Dan. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the following appointments for the May 16, 2023 budget vote. Kanan Eastman, chief inspector and election chairperson. Karen McGregor, election inspector. Sue Neal, election inspector. Caitlin Maloney, election inspector. These appointments are effective for the 23. So moved. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the building use request from the Salem East Soccer for August 1st through October 7th, Monday through Friday, 5:30 P.M. And Saturdays at 9:00 A.M. on the varsity and modified fields, if there is space. And draft is on file. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the merger between Salem Central School District and Cambridge Central School District for modified boys soccer for the 2023-2024 school year. So moved. Motion by Heidi. Second. Is there any questions or concerns? We're gonna press that and then report. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to accept the transportation bid from Duran Incorporated for the transportation of one student from Sanford Street to their home afternoon only, with no monitor. The bid is at the rate of $198 a day beginning March 6th to end on or about June 23rd, 2023. Or until such time as transportation is in effect. So moved. Heidi. Second. And by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. So. There are five open seats on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Of these five seats, four seats are full, three-year terms, ending on June 30th, 2026, and one seat begins on April 25th and ends on June 30th, 2026. Four candidates have been nominated to fill these seats. The Board of Education, of these components, school district may vote on any or all of the following candidates. Four candidates are Michael Erickson, David Petruthka, Stephen Smoller, and Jamel Williams. For a motion to. So moved. To vote for all four?
Yes, so. A second.
Got a proper, is that a proper motion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried four now. Five seats. Entertain a motion to approve the 2023-2024 BOSI's administrative budget. And be it resolved that the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Washington, Saratoga, Warren, Hamilton, and Essex Counties is authorized to expend the sums set forth in the administrative budget in the total amount of $7,381,741 during the school year in 2023-2024. Motion by Heidi. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. So, entertain a motion to approve the service provider agreement between the Salem Central School Districts in the County of Washington through Washington Public Health Services effective February 13th, 2023. Motion by Dan. Second. This is one.
Yeah, I've got a question, more information about that.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Michelle Crandall to help me if, if necessary, because she has more of the specifics of how it would work. But this agreement with Washington County is that we would be a provider for speech services.
For Washington County preschool?
Yes.
Yes. It would be, we'd be looking to be a provider for speech services for our own students that are in the special education, speech, and language. We would be reimbursed for a portion of that so that we'll have offset. It's a great program for the fact that many of our students right now are not doing the service because there are not enough providers.
Good, thank you.
And one of the things also is the ideas in the budget as we had created that .6 speech position, that person would fill, possibly would allow for this role to be filled, maybe not that person specifically, but someone, and depending on how our caseloads are split up.
But yeah.
But it would definitely be, that allows us to be able to meet those needs additionally.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the following budget transfers as presented. So moved. Motion by Andrea. Second. Second by Peter. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 7132, non-resident students. So. Motion by. So moved, sir. I don't know if you had a chance to really look at it when you did try to, to get more specific. And we struggled a little bit with how we wanted the formatting of that policy to go. But I think at this point, I think we have the idea of what we want to say in the policy and then have application process be separate from that policy. Then that can be adjusted or amended if you need to go forward. But at least this would set down the parameters for how we wanted to go forward and actually put into writing that we, we can leave that to each of the four. tuition for our staff. Is it, have any questions or concerns, or something that you think should be addressed within the policy?
Yeah, that's awesome. And something just to add, and I, I believe, uh, I can't remember if I added this at the policy committee meeting or in this meeting, so I'll just repeat it just in case. In the, in this policy, it will include the application, um, should be received by April thirtieth. If the board is okay with it, uh, we would allow that to be extended this year, just from the late.
That's where we're working at it.
Yes. And also, um, the plan will be, as we have received, and we've been holding a few requests that were just previously done, um, given to, uh, the district clerk, so Gina has those, and either Gina or I have talked to each person and just let them know we were holding their letter, um, until this policy was just approved. Uh, we will give them a copy of the policy so that they can, um, just look it over. It really just, it, it stipulates what our common practice has been, it just hasn't been in writing, and really allows us to waive that, waive that tuition. So really, um, that's something that really we should have had in place. So, um, everybody's clear that the process isn't changing per se, but, um, just putting it in writing.
Any further questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Is the, for six point eight for the, um, speech, is that going to replace the E O A help?
No, that's something separate. This is just prepay.
So we have, uh, motion by Heidi, second by Peter, accept the first reading of policy seventy-one, thirty-two. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the M O A between Salem Central School District and the Washington Academy Teachers Association regarding retirement compensation.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to update the following terms and conditions. For Michelle Crandall, Director of People Personnel Services, effective July one, twenty twenty-three. Karen McGregor, Business Manager, effective July one, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Heidi. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the following resolution. It be resolved that the Board of Education of Salem Central School District hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Cheryl Record to a three-year probationary appointment as the elementary principal in the elementary principal tenure commencing July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. You can get upon compliance with the requirements of the educational laws. This record holds a professional certification as a school building leader.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Cheryl, welcome to.
Welcome.
And then, some bad question. Yeah, absolutely. This one, and then this one. Probationary appointment, this is the terms and conditions. All right, entertained a motion to approve the contract between Salem Central School District and, should we say contract or terms and conditions?
Well.
I think it's a contract. It's a contract. Let's get in the right language.
Terms and conditions, it's called terms and conditions.
So we will amend it. I entertain a motion to approve the terms and conditions between the Salem Central School District and Cheryl Record, effective July one, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. And then we have. Entertained a motion to approve the following then-for teachers. Caitlin. Stop, stop. This is stop. Stop, stop. Hey, I'm sorry. Uh, Colleen O'Malley for teacher mentor for new teachers, there were two years, effective April twenty-sixth, for one year. And Erin Tally, Erin Underwood for teacher mentor for new, new teachers, there were two years, effective April twenty-sixth, for one year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Andrea. Assistant Junior Senior High Principal in the secondary principal tenure area, commencing July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Contingent upon compliance with the requirements of education law. Mr. Grady holds an initial certification as a school building leader.
So moved.
Again, second by Dan. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Welcome to the. Entertained a motion to approve the terms and conditions between the Salem Central School District and Sean Grady, effective July one, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Thank you. Moving on, um, is there any, I mean, we've sort of been spending, uh, out of each other's pocket this past week, could we do anything else, even if we'd like to share, uh, share out to the board? And trainings or, there's some things coming up, but, uh. So we do have some, some dates to remember as we move forward? Car crash yourself. I won the teacher competition.
Yeah, that's right.
That must be not off.
Yeah, it was, I found out during April break.
Nice, okay. Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, very exciting, yes, there's going to be a new T-shirt in circulation, they have danced to do that every year.
No, it's awesome. So I just heard that. So we have our strategic, uh, the car crash assembly is service day. Is that the, the one that's, the seven o'clock service day?
Yes, and I will be wearing Lexis' T-shirt.
Uh, our strategic, uh, planning, then four o'clock on May second. We have a policy meeting on May eighth. Our budget hearing is May ninth, at six o'clock in the high school library, and we have our budget vote on May sixteenth, from eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock. We'll be at home, coming in off the.
Circle.
Yeah.
And our policy meeting, will that be, did we decide five or seven?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, so that would be registered.
Is there any other business that we need to discuss? Now you're doing the regular.
There may be a need, um. I don't have all the details yet, but there may be, need to be the need for a special meeting, possibly, um. So. I'm hoping, would it be possible to do that, um, after the board? The budget presentation?
Budget hearing.
Budget hearing on the ninth? Or?
I, I may not be able to choose the ninth.
Okay.
I may not be able to make it.
Okay, let's, um, I'll have Gina put out a couple dates, possible other dates for you, and then we can look it up. With a little more information once I have it. I'm not sure, I don't think it's going to be next week, but it's going to be, it'll possibly, um, be to be before.
Maybe after, I don't know, we, after policy would work, would be, yeah. It's a day earlier, I don't know if that's.
Let me check and see if what needs to be approved will be ready.
Okay.
Some agreements that will, that will.
Yeah.
Oh, the board will need to.
Hopefully we can, we can get that in a quick way. So at this point, um, I'd like to open the meeting back up for public comment again, and people will just come up to the podium and identify themselves, direct their comments to the board.
So, uh, most people in here know me, I'm Zach Johnson. I'm Salem, graduated here. One of the biggest things is, I don't really understand where we're taking away programs that benefit every kid in here out there. I mean, most of the kids in my grade don't even know how to write a check, that's pretty sad. And we're pushing programs to speak in different languages when we can't even figure out our own. So, it doesn't make sense to me where all the money's going to take away important programs, I guess, when other schools are also getting higher or similar state aid increases as we are, and they're not cutting anyone. Granville is about the same size as us, they got a thirteen percent increase that resulted in one point four million dollars. If I had one point four million dollars, I'd probably not work till I was thirty and vote a quarter or something cool. But if we got a twelve percent increase that resolves to about a million, one point two, I would say, that's saying if we're cutting seven spots, that's saying that we'd be paying them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which we're not. So where's the money going from last year's budget and an increase to this year's budget? But we have to remove people?
Well, I hope you come to the budget here increase, then we will lay out all the component pieces of the budget and explain how the money is going to be allocated.
All right, so. Let's go to the next part. Also, if we can't afford things, every company, school, general, business has reserved money somewhere. Take care of problems when nothing comes up. Where'd that go for us, why would it result for all of us? But again, budget meeting.
There's, uh, almost, what, ten dollars that are in reserve account, but those are, that is reserved for, uh, particular.
Specific.
Specific items.
The state, they're re, they're restricted reserves, so the state has certain parameters around when you can, what you can use those different reserves for.
But the money is there, in the, in the reserve.
Also said that we're in a special ed crisis in Salem, so if that's the case, why won't the state either provide us funding, help us funding, or let us slip into that reserve to cover spots until we figure it out for a future plan?
That, this is our system, and this, it's not a perfect system, but this is our system, and we're working within the system to get a balanced budget and provide the services that we need.
So how many special education spots are we going to fill?
And actually, all of those things will be discussed at the, the budget hearing. So we.
But I can't talk then, so.
But the budget hearing is a public hearing, and it's specifically designed for us to share information with the public and receive information, feedback from the public on, on the budget. So it is a public hearing, and it's like this public, public comment session, you would have an opportunity to ask a question.
Once the debate.
I may not be here.
All right, thank you, I'll be here.
My name is Cole Loveland. There's a lot of tension in the room tonight, I feel. And I'm not an expert with numbers, so I'm not going to talk about the numbers. But I am upset. I'm upset to see, um, our teachers go. You know, we're talking about resources, and I think that we are not really thinking about the worth of the teachers that we are, um, you know, that are leaving us. Lexi mentioned that what she will miss when she leaves this school is the community. And before she even said that, that's all I had on my mind. You know, this school is a community. This school, you know, I came here in eighth grade and graduated here. And this is a place that shaped me, and that was a huge part of my life, you know? And we are getting rid of teachers that are very, very important to this community, you know? And we're only looking at the positions, but we're not looking at the people. And I just feel so many different emotions, very like, it's sadness, it's anger, and it's frustration. And it just seems like something just is not adding up here, you know? And I, I have respect for all of you, and I am no way trying to attack any of you, you know? I think that, you know, you guys all know me, you know, and I think we all got along pretty well, you know, so I'm not trying to cause issues here. But I just think that maybe this is going to be setting a precedent that might just not be good for this school, you know? I think that, you know, we're just, I don't know, something just is not adding up, something just does not seem to totally make sense, you know? And everybody seems to be on the same page as, as me, and there seems to be a disconnect between the board and the staff and the community and the students. Does everything I'm saying make any sense? I just, I just find this very unfortunate, you know? I think that there's a lot more to this equation than, than what we're looking at, you know? I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm, that I've got the answers, you know? You guys, you know, this is your job, and you're handling this, but I don't know, you know, that's just what I came here to say, really, and that's what's been on my mind. I just, I'm just upset, you know? I'm just upset with the way that things are going and what I'm seeing, and I think that a lot of people are, you know? And I think a lot of people are just confused, and I don't know, I, I don't really know exactly what to say, but I just wanted, you know, for what it's worth, to explain how I feel, you know? And I think a lot of people share, you know, how I feel, and I think it's important, too, to have the, the trust between the board and, you know, I mean, we are running a school here, you know? And the school is here to shape our future, you know, it's here to shape our students. Um, you know, we are impacting a student's life, many students' lives, with every decision. with every decision that we make in this room. And I don't know, I just, I just really just feel like, you know, something is just, some, just something's mixed up, you know? I, uh, I don't know, but I guess that's what I had to say.
Well, thank you for sharing your thoughts. I appreciate the manner in which you shared them and this is not an easy decision to undertake. It saddens the heart to have to do this. And so I do hear what you're saying to us, but we are looking at the overall community and the requirements that we have as we sit in this seat, so. But I do appreciate that you came here and shared your thoughts, thank you.
You're welcome. I just hope that things can go differently in the future, you know?
Any additional comments?
Hi, I'm Brendan Lee, I'm from Salem, I graduated, uh, two years ago from Salem School. And you just said you're looking out for the overall community and what's best for them. And by terminating some of the positions you chose are going to do a great disservice to the community and the overall well-being of the students at the school. Some of these teachers, they do way above and beyond, way more than they're supposed to do on paper to really help the student and provide a good place for them. They're just extremely important teachers to the school. And I think it's a great disservice to the community and the students as a whole. I think the school will suffer by terminating these specific positions. I think it's good.
Any additional comments?
Some ways I wish I would have for those kids. I'm Jane Daly, so I'm a social studies teacher. I'm also the president of Washington Teacher, maybe president, Washington County Teacher Associations. So, um, the way they all said this was just beautiful, right? This is the true testament of what what we are all feeling too. We wanted some clarification a little bit because, um, when Cole first spoke in the first public session, it was clear that this was not tonight about positions, no, only about positions, it was not about the people. But yet, when we pass this action, it is about the people because it says the superintendent is directed to notify the affected staff members of this action. So it is about the people tonight. It's not May ninth, it's tonight. And so this has been kind of a problem for a bit. Um, and I wrote things to say and then what they say all messed up what I was going to say and in my mind. But God, I loved it. We have, um, from the get-go, we have expressed our concerns about this budget process and looking for some transparency all along, like we we really felt that. We've, we have repeatedly been told at house, these seven positions were cut due to financial strains only. We found out later on, there's other reasons, and you know this because I wrote this to you and the board. Not all of these positions were funded by COVID. People were told that were funded by COVID, it would be for three years. It's been two years, money's gone. We don't understand that. We, some people only learned a few weeks ago that their programs are going to be gone and they were years here. And they weren't COVID-funded. Um, we don't quite understand the plans of how to incorporate all of this and how to help these students and and we also are looking at this. So I guess tonight, you're only addressing the positions, not the people. Then I guess really I hope on May ninth that you look at the people because the people make this community. The people that you're letting go make the community. And with them, we're stronger together. So that's it.
Any further comments?
So my name is Antonio Lee, I'm a junior currently enrolled in Salem, I'm also going to Bosse's current for welding trades. So if you want they want to, talking about how these programs have helped students and you're talking about how they were COVID-funded. During COVID, we were given you were able to get through, you were able to skip certain finals through COVID because of how it was tough. But I know many kids in my grade that the only reason they've passed any of their grades have been the help that they've been given through these teachers. I, I don't know it firsthand, but many of my friends do. And simply if the more space that would have been put between us if they never would have been given the chance to progress a grade. As I know, I know all my friends, multiple of my friends are on probation list currently. Scraping by, they're working their butts off to just pass the grade. They're all extremely close and they all are getting the help that they need right now. But what about when those positions are not there to help them next year? How will that affect the students? That's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Uh, Dawn Minor, Special Ed chair. I, I'm just, what I'm saying is that right now I'm not feeling the Salem pride. Every day we say it in the classrooms, but I don't think what we're, our decision here is representing what we teach our children and how we represent our children. I have seen the new teachers in classrooms, I work in kindergarten, I work in, uh, third grade. I have seen the teachers that have just started, amazing. The, the way they've connected and not just academically, socially and emotionally. And we just got through two, three years of COVID and now we're taking away new blood for the school as well as, um, teachers that have been here like a long time. And those teachers, they've seen an action too. And we're taking away programs that are essential for these children. These children need the programs, please reconsider what you're doing here. This is a, a decision that is just made by looking at the numbers. And whatever the issue is with the numbers, I don't know that part. But I know that all of the, the teachers that are out there doing their job that don't deserve it. And I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Any additional comment?
Okay, I'm Zach Johnson.
Zach, we're getting close to the end, is there something specific that you wanted to quickly share with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make it quick. So they all talked about, you know, what the teachers mean to the kids. And if we're being honest, there was a lot of new teachers that walked in when I was in school. I mean, you were a new principal when I was in school, we butted heads pretty hard. And that's kind of just the way of the community, you know, people walk in and it's more of this is a community of you earn my respect. Not I hand it to you kind of deal, that's the whole community, we respect each other, but as soon as you break it, it's done for. And those teachers have been here for a long time, the kids know who they are, look up to them, respect them. It goes back and forth, one hand washes the other. You bring new kids, new teachers into the school, kids aren't going to know who they are, they're not going to have anywhere near the connection that they're going to have with teachers that they've been looking up to for four or five years that their siblings lived up to. All I got to say, but.
And at this particular point in time, I am going to close the public comment session and, um, entertain a motion to resume executive session for the discussion, the employment history of particular persons on that leaving from employment. Some, as I hear, although in favor, please.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Wait to hear about. Skill and just. So I'm getting those phones, you guys did such a great job and I was excited. You have your keys? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you very much, Phil, for that. Hey, nice to meet you, thank you so much.
Yeah, I was kind of shaking all of us, like I'm sorry, I'm unconscious going through my head.